KPTS, Channel 8.
Production and broadcast costs for Sedgwick County Commission meetings have been underwritten by Sedgwick County. KPTS welcomes comments from the public on its broadcast of the county commission hearings. Viewers are invited to write to County Commission Broadcast, KPTS 320 West 21st Street, Wichita, Kansas 67203.
Good morning, I'm Kristy Zukovich. Welcome to the October 7th Sedgwick County Commission meeting. We are glad you're joining us today. We like to use this time to let you know about events going on around Sedgwick County. And one of the first things that we need you to remember is that we do have bulky waste coupons that are still available, and you can find those on our website at sedgewickcounty.org. They are, uh, once you apply for one, you will get it in about a week. It gives you the opportunity to dispose of about a thousand pounds of material for free at one of the transfer stations. Again, all the information's available on our website. We hope you will take advantage of this opportunity. Do a little cleanup. It's a, it's a very good, um, very good program. We try to do every so often as we can. Also, commissioners, remind you that there are activities going around, uh, going on, including Exploration Place has a, something for all ages, and they're gonna have something for the over 21 crowd on Friday. It's a fundraiser, and it's called Museum of the Undead. And again, you can find out information on their website, but opportunity for folks a little bit older to go out and enjoy Exploration Place. And then, of course, they have Kansas Kids Connect, which is for those who are five and under. So, something for everybody at Exploration Place. And then, of course, coming up at the end of October, we have at the Sedgwick County Zoo, Night of the Living Zoo, and that is the 23rd through the 25th. Commissioners, we have a good, uh, participation in our audience today. Always nice to see people who want to be here, and we've got important items, including consideration of a grant for Health Department Services, consideration of a grant for Calm Care Mental Health Services, a consideration of a grant for Calm Care Homeless Program, and then we may hear the Quarterly Extension Report as well this morning. So, lots of important business, but, you know, we like to occasionally use the time to, to get to know commissioners, and, and we're gonna show them how smart you are today. We're gonna have a little quiz.
Lots of luck.
And it's Fire Prevention Week, so I thought, you know, we've had things going on at, uh, the Sedgwick County Zoo. They had the big fire prevention luncheon yesterday, so lots of folks out at the zoo. So, we're gonna do a little quiz about Fire Prevention Week, and you see the map there of our Fire District Number One. And I want you to determine and think about how you're going to decide your answer before you make a decision. So, Commissioner Norton?
I'll be right there.
Okay, you're up first, so you're gonna set the tone. Finish this phrase, stop, rock and roll, drop and sing, stop, drop and sleep, or stop, drop and roll?
Are those clowns I see on this thing there?
That is our Fire District Fire Education Clowns.
Boy, this is tough. I've done all of those things in my life, but I'll say D.
It is D. We all learned very young age, stop, drop and roll. So, always a good message, people remember that, kids especially. And of course, the Fire District Clowns help to get those messages out. All right, Commissioner Peter John, are you ready?
Absolutely.
Okay. Smoke detectors should be just in bedrooms, only in hallways outside of bedrooms, above stairwells only, or all of the above?
I, uh, I, I am determined to give you a direct and decisive answer. And despite Commissioner Norton's excellent assistance, I'm gonna stick with D.
It is D. It is all of the above, and you see that their, uh, their information they put out, hear the beep where you sleep, so it's kind of a reminder to folks that put those in your bedrooms as well. Chairman Ransaw, you know we always jump over you.
Okay.
So, we'll come back to you.
You save the best for last?
I save the best for last, every single time. Commissioner Howell?
This is scary.
When do you replace the batteries in a smoke detector? On your birthday, Christmas, 4th of July, or spring and fall with daylight savings time?
In reality, or what should we do? Okay, so I'll answer, what should we do? We should do D, spring and fall with daylight savings time, and I hope people do that. It's a really good idea.
They say you should check them regularly, but you should change the batteries twice a year, and that's a good time, again, a good way for us to remember. And, um, our folks in Emergency Management have also added, change your batteries in your NOAA Weather Radio at the same time. So, kinda making the message a little bit bigger, kind of taking a little bit more-
Let me add one more to that. You know, we talked about carbon monoxide detectors a while back, and they're really very similar to smoke detectors.
Exactly.
So, does apply that to that as well?
Exactly.
So, you don't wait until they start beeping in the middle of the night to change them?
Well, you can.
And when that happens, you just take a broom and you knock 'em down.
We don't have any fire folks here, do we? All right, Commissioner Unruh. To be a firefighter, you need to have a high school diploma and firefighter certification, EMT certification, valid driver's licenses, and/or all of the above.
I'll go with D.
It is all of the above. We have a program, and we have opportunities for folks to be firefighters, not only here at Fire District Number One, but City of Wichita, surrounding communities, even communities have volunteer firefighters. But they require both the firefighter certification and the EMT certification because they serve as first responders for medical calls as well. So, you guys are doing really well. Chairman Ransaw, you gotta bring it home.
All right.
Okay. Fire stations in Sedgwick County, there are nine stations, they are staffed 24 hours a day, 365 days a year, they provide mutual aid to surrounding cities and counties, or all of the above.
Well, Kristy, I don't want to delay this meeting any longer, so I'm gonna go with D.
It is D, and, uh, we do. We have great fire folks who are out there, who, again, not only provide that, uh, medical first response for EMS, but also help to protect the fire safety, help other communities, and they go out and they help teach kids in the schools and, and all of us about fire prevention. So, important work they do. It's a good time for us to remember Fire Prevention Week. Thanks, thank you for allowing me to, uh, have a little education this morning and play along, and I think we should get to the meeting then.
All right, thank you, Kristy. With that, I'll call to order the regular meeting of the Board of Sedgwick County Commissioners for October 7th, 2015. Madam Clerk, first item, please.
Invitation to be led by Dr. Michael O'Donnell, Grace Baptist Church. Please remain standing for the flag salute.
I'm delighted to be here today, and so we'll go ahead and open up with prayer. Good morning, Lord. You are so gracious to us as we walk out and breathe the cool air of the fall. Lord, you've given us a wonderful place to live here in Sedgwick County. I wanna thank you for that. We are grateful for all the blessings you bestowed upon us. Lord, you are gracious in your goodness and your mercy, and Lord, we are forever grateful for that. Lord, I do pray that you will be with those in our community who are hurting today. Often at our church and other places around, we see those who are struggling. Some are struggling because of illness, some are struggling because of financial difficulty, some are struggling because of relationships that are struggling, and Lord, we know that you know those needs and you care about them all. And while we're incapable of solving all those things, Lord, we know you are, and we thank you for elected officials who, uh, give of their time to be able to try to make our county a better place to live. So, I pray that you will just, uh, give these men wisdom, guide them as they lead our, our community. Lord, help them be able to, uh, make decisions that will, uh, benefit us and allow us to be able to, uh, be a, a community that truly cares for one another. Lord, help us reach out to those who are hurting. Lord, help us give them a, a hand up, not necessarily a handout, and have an opportunity to be able to see them, uh, thrive. Lord, most importantly, we thank you that your love is never-ending, and that as we come together and wherever we go, whatever we do, we know you're there. Thank you for that, and be with this meeting today. We ask these things in your holy name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, next item?
Roll call. Commissioner Unruh?
Present.
Commissioner Norton?
Present.
Commissioner Howell?
Present.
Commissioner Peter John?
Present.
Chairman Ransaw?
Present. Before we go to the next item, I do want to let everybody know that we have a need for a, uh, an executive session today, and if the meeting's not done by 10:00 AM, we will go to recess for executive session, then come back and, and finish the regular meeting. So, uh, next item, please.
Consideration of minutes. Item A, special meeting minutes of August 6th, 2015. All commissioners were present.
Uh, Commissioner Peter John?
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm gonna make the suggestion that we take Items A, B, C, and D, which are meeting minutes for the days of August 6th, 2015, September 2nd, September 4th, and September 9th. I'm sorry, well, September 4th, uh, those three, those three, uh, minutes, um, make a motion that we approve those minutes.
For just A, B, and C, right?
A, B, and C.
Correct. And we have a second. Madam Clerk, call the vote.
Commissioner Unruh?
Aye.
Commissioner Norton?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Aye.
Commissioner Peter John?
Aye.
Chairman Ransaw?
Aye. Next item, please.
Item D, regular meeting minutes of September 9th, 2015. Commissioner Norton was absent.
Commissioner Peter John?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm gonna make a motion that we approve the regular meeting minutes of September 9th and, uh, September 16th, 2015, uh, for, for both those two items.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, call the vote.
Commissioner Unruh?
Aye.
Commissioner Norton?
Absence.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Peter John?
Aye.
Chairman Ransaw?
Aye. Next item, please.
Proclamations. Item F, proclamation declaring Grace Baptist Church Day.
Commissioners, I have the following proclamation to read into the record. Whereas churches have always been an important part of the Wichita community, and whereas churches encourage people to be active and productive citizens, and whereas Grace Baptist Church has positively influenced Wichita under the leadership of their two pastors, Dr. Michael Sheppes, sorry if I got that wrong, and Dr. Michael O'Donnell, and whereas an anniversary is a time of reflection, a celebration of all you achieved in, in a mere six decades, and whereas six, and whereas Grace Baptist Church has weathered and changed, the changing times and has grown stronger for it, and now ministers to the community in the days ahead. And now therefore be it resolved that I, Richard Ransaw, Chairman of the Board of Sedgwick County Commissioners, do hereby proclaim October 11th, 2015, as Grace Baptist Church Day. Uh, Commissioners, what's the will of the board?
Mr. Chairman?
The proclamation.
A second.
Okay. Madam Clerk, call the vote.
Commissioner Unruh?
Aye.
Commissioner Norton?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Peter John?
Aye.
Chairman Ransaw?
Aye. And we have Dr. Michael O'Donnell here to receive the proclamation.
Well, thank you, Commissioners. We appreciate that. It's been a privilege to, uh, appear before you at different times. We appreciate very much your work and your effort, and certainly, I know you understand the, uh, relationship of the church to the, uh, community and helping folks, and, and that's what we really are striving to do at, at Grace. We've had, had opportunities to help. In fact, I, as I leave here, I'll be going to the, uh, Sedgwick County Juvenile Court to, uh, help with some families who are working to reintegrate children back in the home, and we've had some nice opportunities to help some of our families who are hurting, and we're, uh, very appreciative of that. I, I'm very privileged to be able to, uh, pastor where I grew up. It's the, uh, church where I attended as a boy, and, uh, been spent most of my life there. Uh, my father, who's in attendance, and his, uh, wife, had the privilege of pastoring them, and, and getting wisdom from my father, and my wife Peggy, who's, who's here as well, and she serves at the Bel Air City Council, and, uh, we are very involved in politics, not because, uh, it's always easy or fun, but because we realize that, uh, Jesus said very clearly, render unto Caesar the things that are Caesar, and we believe that service as well. So, we're very proud to be able to serve in some of those areas, and then, uh, my son, uh, Senator Michael O'Donnell, is, uh, very, uh, encouraging to our church body as well as, uh, what he does in the community as well. And so, we wanna thank you for this recognition. We've got some special events going on. One is actually taking place at, uh, Lyndon Wood Park on Saturday evening from 5:30 to 7:00. We have a open-air concert. We've got folks that have sang together for years, so we don't know how to get it on sound, but we're gonna have a fun time trying it again, and, uh, just looking forward to a great celebration, uh, this weekend. We're just grateful for you, uh, allowing, uh, or letting us be a part of, uh, this proclamation. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I think Commissioner Peter John has some comment?
Well, I'd wish you well. Thank you for your invocation, and all the best with whoever's in charge of the weather for your event on Saturday.
Thank you. I appreciate that very much.
Thank you very much for everything that you do.
Thank you.
Uh, next item, please.
New business. Item G, County Extension Quarterly Report.
Good morning. First of all, I think we should ask KDHE to, to limit participation to United States citizens, nationals, and qualified aliens as permitted by 7 CFR 2246.16C3. And have staff, number two, have staff develop a plan or a form to be filled out, asking people about their citizenship status for anyone seeking benefits from the Health Department, so that we can gather data, and we can tell people, yes, this is a problem, this, or no, it's not a problem. Um, uh, number three, I'd like to remove, all the health positions, I think, should be removed from the staffing table. I think this is an issue we have, um, throughout the county I'd like to address, but we might as well take this opportunity to do that. And I'd all, also like to, um, have staff begin to work on efficiency studies, see if we could eliminate at least one of these satellite locations to be more efficient and effective. Um, so those, those four things, I'd like to just get a consensus at some point in this discussion to see if, if we can move forward with those sorts of things. Beyond that, with, with respect to the program itself, I'll continue to advocate that I think we need to eliminate the, the breastfeeding counselors. I mean, there are other alternatives out there. I'm not convinced that the government needs to be, uh, the one teaching breastfeeding. Um, additionally, I'm concerned about the overhead cost that we're spending on here. I think we spend too much. We have, um, and in general, we haven't spent what we spent anyway. So, I took this amount that we're, we're gonna be awarded, and I took out the breast, the amount that would be for the breastfeeding, and then I reduced it by 38% because that's the amount our caseload's gone down. Then I increased it 3% a year for six years, and it came up with a little over $1.9 million, which is about $357,000 less than what we're proposed to get, which is very close to the $320,000 less, you know, we didn't spend last year. So, personally, I think there's an opportunity to be a little more efficient and effective in this area, and with our use of taxpayer dollars, and, um, when the, I don't know if other commissioners have any comments, but, uh, when the time comes, I'll make a motion to accept the grant with a few modifications. Commissioner Peter John?
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I appreciate you walking through those numbers. I may wanna walk through it a little bit more slowly when we get to the point of motions and so on, but I'd like to throw out the fact that, uh, as a person who's been involved with the immigration system and knowing the challenges to legally immigrate into the United States when we had a rule of law in this country, uh, and how basically- when we had a rule of law in this country, and how basically we're in a situation now where if you can cross a river, the Rio Grande, or if you can step across the borders, whether it's the northern border, the southern border, or any other American border, and get into the, into the country, benefits become, you know, the people who came here yearning to breathe free, I'm concerned that we've become, and with, with the welfare state expansion we have, we're learning to live, we're going to have people focused on living for free. I, I'd like to be able to restrict this program. I understand legally from the county councilors' end that our federal, federal government says no. We've been said that this is a state program, but I guess I'll throw this out as a question. Adrienne, while this is being administered by the State Department of Health and Environment, basically, this is a federal program and a national program. Am I correct in that assumption?
You are correct.
Okay. Because as a federal program, my understanding is that we can't make this as a requirement, but I'd certainly like to have information available in terms of what, what is going on. I saw a recent report that we have a record number, both in terms of aggregate numbers and percentage, of immigrants into this country. And, and now that we've entered into a, we've been transformed by our leadership in Washington in terms of how we handle things, I think it'd be important to find out how these programs are working and operating. So, since this is basically a federal program and the state's coming through it, I'd be interested in finding out, you know, I'm a little bit surprised that there's no other states that have, have made this request, but, but in light of the, the challenge that we have in terms of, I saw recently, just earlier this week, about how folks down in, one of the state leaders down in Texas talking about how we may have literally an invasion by the Islamic State advocates coming across the southern border, and death threats being put against the Navy SEAL, former member of SEAL Team Six, which I find just absolutely outrageous. But having said that, the topic we have at hand here, if we can't require legal immigration status and citizenship as part of participation in this program, Mr. Chairman, I'm very supportive of the idea, at least asking that as part of the participation, which I think we can do, to have some understanding of, of the folks who are participating in this program. And I guess I will ask one other question in terms of, in terms of staff on this. Adrienne, if, this, this is basically a food program where food's provided to the recipients. And people who receive this, are they also eligible for what used to be called the food stamp? It's now called the SNAP program?
They, they could be eligible for Medicaid, yes.
Oh, and Medicaid too? I know, I meant food, food stamps. Okay.
Yes.
So, I've, in terms of, you know, there's a lot of talk about duplication. I know that the biggest single part of the United States Department of Agriculture budget is the food stamp program, so we've got at least two food programs here coming through United States Department of Agriculture. So, I think, I think your idea, Mr. Chairman, of at least asking the question would, would be a very, very reasonable one as going forward with renewing this grant. Thank you.
Can I ask specifically if you support items one through four on this list, so we can give direction to staff? Or which ones you would? We've had some problems in the past making sure the manager knows. Just like to get some consensus from each of the Commissioners.
I'm, I'm always sympathetic to trying to see if we can get efficiency. Obviously, county tax dollars are most important, but I think state and federal tax dollars that the county administers are important too, so. And if we've got open positions that aren't being filled and reduce support, I, I don't have any problems with items three or, and certainly having an efficiency study, I don't have any problems with that under number four.
In addition to one and two? Yeah.
I think I've already.
Yeah, yeah. Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would like to give my support for the first four items as well, and I have some questions about the rest of it. But before I go on from that, I'd like to ask our councilors, are you familiar with these, these items that were presented this morning?
I'm not.
Okay. And Adrienne, have you, have you seen these specifically?
Yes, yes, I have.
Okay. Is there any reason that you can think of as to, some specific legal reason as to why these could not be implemented as listed here? Or any, any constraints that you can think of that's going to bar us from doing any of the things that we're talking about here?
Are you asking me or?
Yes, I'm asking you. In your opinion, do you have any information as to why any of these things cannot be done?
From, from what I've heard from Justin, who has spoken with their, their attorneys, neither the, as Commissioner Peter John was saying, the federal law doesn't prohibit, or does prohibit discrimination based on national origin, as does KDCH. KDCH is not also in favor, said they would not permit us to ask status, but we have not been in discussion with their attorneys about number two.
We're not, we're not talking about limiting any, any benefits. We're talking, providing benefits regardless of their status. And so.
Yes.
With respect to providing services, just trying to get some data on who our clients are as they walk through the door. We're not talking about specifically the WIC program or, or any things listed on today's consideration, but basically all the health, all the health services that's provided by the Health Department, asking our clients this question to start getting data as to who are, who are our clients. So, we're not talking about limiting services to anybody. So, with that, with respect to that idea, is there any reason why we cannot ask the question?
We, we could definitely work with the grantors to see if there were any legal reasons why we could not do that.
Until we have a, some, some barrier, I think I am certainly supportive of these four items. Just to go through them, I think knowing who we serve, I think, is important. Removing the health positions that have been vacant for a period of time, I think it just makes sense. The program is, is declining because, as you said, the birth rate is reducing naturally, and so are the, the health positions, as far as I can tell, don't have a, a need to be left on the table. I think eliminating, limiting those right now does make sense, and if that, if our caseloads, our clients go up and we need to restore those at some point, we can certainly have that discussion down the road. Getting data, I don't think is going to be a problem personally. I, I think that that's good to, to know who are, who we're serving. So, I, I think now, number one and two and three certainly make sense. And then, and then finally, an efficiency study, I think that's always a good thing to do, especially if we can do that with our, with our own staff. I think that's a smart thing to, to do. So, I certainly support the first four of these altogether. Respect to the breastfeeding peer counselors, I would ask you, do you know anybody else in the community that's providing similar services?
If, if a woman gives birth at, at Wesley, they have access to lactation specialists after they give birth. With our WIC breastfeeding peer counselors, they begin to work with moms prior to giving birth, because some come in saying, my mom didn't breastfeed, I'm not going to breastfeed, I wasn't successful with my, with my first baby, so I don't think, so they're able to, to look at what those struggles were. And in the time that we added the breastfeeding peer counselors at the end of 2011, we increased breastfeeding initiation by 8.8% and duration by 11%. So, they've been shown to be very effective in helping babies get the best nutrition possible.
Okay. If I understand correctly, the, the WIC program is for, from conception through age five for the children?
It is for any pregnant mom, breastfeeding mom, or any mom that may not breastfeed, that has babies, infancy, or newborn up to age five.
Okay.
That then meets nutrition or medical guidelines and income guidelines.
Of the, of the 12, approximately 12,000 clients in your latest data that was provided to us, do you know what percentage of those were, were clients that were using the, the breastfeeding peer counselors?
Do you know what the number is?
Either number of clients or percentage?
Do you have that broken down? No, we don't have that broken down. All, all of the clients that come in and they meet with a nurse or a registered dietitian gets some information on breastfeeding, and then because we only have one part-time breastfeeding peer counselor at each of our three sites, so they only have so much time, so they focus on the high-risk moms that may have difficulties with breastfeeding.
Well, since there's, I think, .5 FTE for each of the three locations, are these, these are full-time employees that are doing this as a, as a second part of their job, so to speak?
No. We, we just have three part-time positions, so that's, there's just one, one part-time position, 20-hour position at each of the three locations.
All right. All right. Well, then, that's all my questions. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Enruh?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Well, Adrienne, I want to ask a question about the grant again, that's, I'm clearly, clear on this, but the grant that we receive, we just kind of draw against it, and what we don't use doesn't come to us, and it's rolled back in for future.
That's correct.
Future programming.
That's correct.
Okay. So, I, I guess I was trying to address the, one of the items on here about reducing the grant amount. I don't see where that would be practical for us. I mean, if we, if we don't use it, we don't get it. So, we only, we only get paid for the expenses we can verify.
That's correct.
Okay. So, I, I guess I, on limiting participation, I, I understand the motivation behind that and all, but as the Board of Health, it seems like we're charged with responsibility to help provide good health to all of our citizens, and, and not only citizens, but all the, all the members of our community. And we're trying to keep our community healthy and to disbar some folks from receiving these services, I, I think kind of works counter to our responsibilities as a Board of Health. So, I'm, I'm having trouble, even though I can understand the political, political thought behind it. You know, and it, it leads to the question then, are we going to ask citizenship status when there's an EMS call? Will we not, you know, we're going to say, well, we're not going to provide EMS service if you're not a citizen of the United States. And, you know, we have, we have other services that we offer. I mean, I suppose if we have a group of folks that, we don't know the, the condition of their citizenship status, we're still going to put their house out if it's on fire. I mean, you know, it's just, just some things we do as part of the community. So, I'm really having trouble trying to find a way to participate in that. And getting information and having that, we collect data from everybody, all different ways and all different times, so I'm not opposed to asking, are you a citizen or not? I mean, I don't know if we get an honest answer, but I guess we can ask a question. And then, and then back to the list that was given, just removing all the health positions from the staffing table, I don't, I don't see that that's a, a big problem. I mean, I would want to stalk, talk with the director and say, do we need to hold these positions open? Are we anticipating some need? I mean, I don't want to just keep going back and forth on creating or adding to our staffing tables. So, I would, I would want to know what, what's the business plan here? What are we anticipating? How are we going to manage our responsibility? I'm, I also think that being more efficient's a good thing to do, and if, and if we need to have some sort of analysis to help us be more efficient, well, that's, that's a good thing to do. However, I'm, I'm pretty confident that, that our department heads and our staff work hard at trying to be as efficient as they can, because they've already got all kinds of pressure on them to do more with less, is the phrase that we use. So, I, I believe that we're already involved in a lot of that. So, I, I, I think that we should go ahead and receive the full amount of the grant. We want to ask people about their citizenship and try to get information, and I have no problem with that. But denying, denying services for programs that we offer, I, as, as a Board of Health member and just a member of our community, I'm just having a hard time saying, well, here's a person with a child and doesn't quite know how to stay healthy and do the right things, and I just have a hard time saying, no, we're not going to help you as, as a Board of Health member. So, I know there are other agencies in the community that provide that, and so there are other places for them to get it, and that are, maybe some of them are not tax-funded, which is part of the, part of the underlying issue here. But as, as a Board of Health member, I think that we ought to provide these services. So, I, I don't think, I don't think I'll be supportive of that, is all I have.
Mr. Peter John?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I want to throw out a couple of points, found Commissioner Enruh's comments interesting, because we're not in front of us talking about denying services. My understanding is, under federal law, we can't do so. We could ask the state and see if the state might want to say, feds, we'd like to verify that the folks who are here are here legally, or regardless of whether they're a citizen or they're, have a green card. The concern expressed that I have, and that I tried to explain, was that it was strictly folks who are not here legally and who are trying to acquire and access services. This is a problem. I'm going to mention some, a couple of folks who are here legally, or came here legally, and they've got all kinds of government services. You may have seen them in the news. And I, I mention this because this is poignant for me. I'm, many of you know that I used to be physically, more physically fit than I am now, and I ran some marathons. Never got to Boston, never ran the Boston Marathon. But the Sarnia brothers got here legally, they accessed all kinds of government services. Before, they managed to set off explosives that killed three people, that maimed hundreds of others. Some of those folks lost limbs, they'll never run again with their own two legs. They were here legally. What we're trying to do here is just ask the question, are they here? Are the folks accessing this program? Are they citizens? Are they here legally? Or they don't? And we can't restrict it under the federal rules. So, I think that goes by the wayside. Now, the point was raised in terms of other government services, you know, voter registration is one of the services we provide here, and I know there's some local units around the country, I think in the sanctuary cities where they're basically allowing folks to register regardless of whether they're citizens or not. I hope that never happens in Kansas, and I think with our current state laws and leadership from our Secretary of State, that won't happen, but what happens in the other 49 states, I don't, I'm not nearly a sanguine about. So, I do plan to be supportive of this motion in front of us today. I, I think it's reasonable as a good step and sends, I think, a message that goes beyond Sedgwick County's borders in terms of the challenges that we face, not only at the local unit for administering a program, but the decisions we make today have implications, I think, for broader policies at the state level. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Excuse me. Item number one here is just asking KDHE, excuse me again, I'm just asking KDHE to, to consider limiting WIC participation. This will be a state-level decision, so we're not going to, at the county level, limit any resources, regardless of what KDHE responds to that. Is that correct, Mr. Chairman?
No. If, if, they have the authority to limit participation to, to citizens, nationals, qualified aliens. If they do that, they'll have, they will set up some rules to do that, and we can follow that.
Correct. So, until they make a, until they make a.
A decision.
A policy choice, then we are going to provide services regardless.
Right.
Okay. So, number one really is just asking KDHE to consider this position. And then, with respect to one of my previous colleagues' discussion, we're not going to, I don't think we're intending to limit resources to anybody. We're going to deliver services to anybody who comes to us. In fact, I don't, I don't think we're, I don't think we're intending to even ask for papers of proof of citizenship regardless. I think we're just going to ask them on their own, you know, of their own free will to answer a question, and they can be honest, or they could answer the question. I'd imagine there'd be a, I don't want to answer this question option on that list. And so, I don't know that we are going to, again, I don't think this is about removing services from anybody. So, I want to be very clear, this is something, we're just collecting data, which the Health Department does a lot of data collection anyway, so this just, it just seems like a natural question to ask. So, I do have one more, one more question regarding the breast, the breastfeeding peer counselors, and that is, are they involved in the mechanics of, of teaching and helping moms breastfeed? Are they just basically trying to promote breastfeeding as a, as a health initiative?
When you say mechanics?
I mean, for example, in the hospital, when the new moms are giving birth, they have to learn how to do this and, and get used to the idea and, and that type of thing. But you talked about talking to the moms before they've had a baby, and it may be promoting health.
Both, because they're also certified breastfeeding, breastfeeding counselors.
They do.
Both.
Okay. And, and once they, once moms are, are doing this and things are moving forward, are you continuing to provide services to them in this respect?
No. We're, we're providing someone else that needs the help.
All right. That's all my questions. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Norton?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Norton.
Well, it's probably, it may no surprise to anyone that I'm not gonna be in favor of the caveats that are being laid before us. I think we should go ahead and accept the grant. And then if we want to have conversations in a staff meeting, put together a work group and consider each one of these as they stand alone. Taking them as a bundled effect doesn't, doesn't resonate with me at all. We can accept the full amount of the grant and then let it naturally diminish or expand as, as we have a client base, and I think we'll be efficient. Certainly, there's no reason not to open up the belly of the beast and look at efficiencies and be sure we're doing the best work that we possibly can. But I don't know that I want to bundle that with the, just the grant application and, and what we do as the Board of Health through our Health Department. If we want to have other discussions about each one of these items at some point and come back after we've had a good, rich understanding of the implications of all these, that's fine. I don't know that I'm prepared today to understand all of the implications that could happen to our community. And, you know, I think we're listing at windmills when we're trying to eliminate services to folks out there that are a minor part of the population, but we still have a, as human beings, in my mind, we have some obligation to be sure that we take care of the people in our community. And it's not just on this level, but on many levels. And I want to be sure we have a great conversation about this before we go helter-skelter today. This is the first time I've seen this piece of paper, to reduce the amount, to eliminate positions, to go and lobby KDHE to change their positions on some things. And I thought those could have very profound, long-term effects and unintended consequences on a very vulnerable population in our community. And I'm a real believer, as, as you treat the most vulnerable and underserved in your community is how you're known as a civilization. And that's who we're dealing with right here, people that need some help understanding how to be parents, how to keep their kids healthy. Every study I've ever seen shows that a healthy start in the first few years of life and a parent that's really taking serious the responsibility of having a child, raising a child, keeping them healthy with good nutrition and good services is very important. And it is unfortunate that not every mother, expectant mother, family, parent has all the abilities and knowledge and, and resources to make sure their child has everything that they need. And I think as a society, we owe it to ourselves to make sure that the children that are born in, in our Ketchment area have the best start that they possibly can. So I'm not gonna be supportive of these, although I would be supportive of having conversations at some point. But I don't think today's the day to kind of add all these caveats on there when we really hadn't discussed it at a, at a, a long, drawn-out, factual presentation. That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. I just want to clarify, there's, no motion's been made and all six of these things are not gonna be bundled together. We're talking about items one through four to see if we have a consensus on those which, or a majority is supportive. And I think we do. When everyone's done talking, I am, I am gonna make a motion with respect to five and six. And there could be substitute motions as well, so. And commissioners are free to pick and choose which one of these they support and don't support, so.
Commissioner Unruh.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Well, that helps clear up a question I had. I was gonna ask if we were willing to be able to take the recommended action as an item and then these as, as separate items.
What?
The recommended act.
One, one through four, we've had discussion. I think the majority of people that, of commissioners have already given, you know, their indication they support these things if the management staff can proceed with those with that direction. It won't be a formal motion unless you want to make one.
Okay. No, 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 I, I don't.
But with the others, there will be. With five and six. I, I plan on making one and if you want to make a substitute or, or you could make an initial one or whatever, so.
Okay. Well, if, if that's the case, then I would, I would move that we take the recommended action, which is to accept the award and authorize the chair to sign the award document.
Second. Commissioner Peter John.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted, I'm glad we've got a motion on the floor and appreciate the Commissioner Unruh getting, getting that, that out of the way. I wanted to comment and meant to mention it earlier and neglected to, but there's several points I wanted to make, but the implication in terms of national origin, I'm a strong supporter of legal immigration, operating under federal statutes, my understanding, and I may be wrong on this, I'm not an attorney, but I think we're operating in federal law was set back in the 1960s under the Hart-Seller Immigration Act that made some major changes in federal immigration statutes at that time. And I don't think, there may have been some relatively minor amendments since then, but I think that's what we're operating to, a federal law is still operating, which I don't believe it is. We've got an executive action that apparently superseded it, courts are silent and Congress is silent. So having said that, I wanted to clear the implication that in some way I have a problem with national origin. I don't. I don't want to discriminate against anyone. I believe in the rule of law. That is what I'm trying to defend. And, and in this day and age, this may be a, make me an outlier in a variety of ways, but, but when it comes to programs that may be, may be affected by this, that's one of the reasons why I'm sympathetic to some of the proposals we have in front of us and, and appreciate the discussion we've had here at the bench because I wish we'd been in a position where we could more directly restrict participation in the program and that the federal, apparently federal law does operate here, sort of like, I guess it must be like the IRS rules, those still operate too. But, but I guess I, I'm not in a position to pick and choose like, like some folks who seem to be beyond the statute. So I, I think having this discussion has been helpful and, and I appreciate all my colleagues' comments. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Adrian, on the breastfeeding, the numbers that you talked about, are those self-reported numbers? They come and we ask them if they're still breastfeeding, et cetera?
Yes.
And, and you said, you've got part, these, these breastfeeding peer counselors are part-time and there are other people like nurses and stuff that also give instructions on breastfeeding?
Just the, the very basic. So if someone has, if someone having struggles or problems, then they're referred to the breastfeeding peer counselors?
All right. A couple of things with respect to this program and with respect to, and our ideas over the Board of Health. First of all, I mean, this is a welfare program under the guise of a public health program. It's, it's essentially a government-run food bank where you get free food with vouchers. And, you know, the question is, should the hard-working citizens of this county, state, and country be forced to subsidize illegal immigration? If someone comes here and violates our laws, do they then have an entitlement to a handout and free food from the taxpayers? I say no. Don't violate our laws and come in here and then expect a handout. If you're gonna come here illegally, then you need to be prepared to provide for yourself and your family. That's all there is to it. And I think we, we have a fiduciary responsibility on behalf of the taxpayers of Sedgwick County and the state and the coun, country to ask KDHE to, to limit participation in this. I think there's other programs that limit participation to those that are here illegally, and why shouldn't this be any different? If they say no, then so be it. At least we can tell our constituents, say we tried. But, you know, there are plenty of private, privately-run food banks out there and people are free to make donations and, and give that to illegal aliens if they want to, anytime. But to use the government to forcibly redistribute wealth and money from hard-working citizens, many of whom are, are struggling to provide for their own families, and then give it to someone here who comes here illegally, I don't think that's appropriate. We should at least ask the question and find out. With that being said, we do have a motion and a second. I want to make a substitute motion that we accept the grant at a reduced amount of $1,901,000, excuse me, $1,901,219 and eliminate the breastfeeding peer counselor positions. I guess.
Second.
There is a second. We'll at least get a vote on it. And we can have, as far as these other four, I think, Mr. Manager, we have enough commissioners supporting this, but we can talk more about this in staff meeting if we need to next Tuesday. And so these four aren't really tied necessarily to this, but we'll have some ongoing discussion. Commissioner Howell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to let you know that I will support a similar substitute motion if this one fails. So for right now, I'm gonna probably go ahead and vote no, but I will make a substitute motion after this, after this next vote.
Okay.
Do something very similar, which you just talked about. Thank you.
Commissioner Unruh.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, I just wanted to explain my no vote before we had it, and that is, I really think the elimination of, of the peer counselors is something that our director needs to consider and evaluate, whether or not that's gonna be detrimental to the program or not. I hate to, I hate, I mean, that's an operational issue rather than a policy issue, it seems to me. And I'd like to leave that under her discretion. And I, and I don't see the practicality of reducing our ask to 1.9 when we're only gonna use as much as we actually use in the program. I just wanted to get that, my thinking on the record, is all I have.
Thank you, Commissioner. Madam Clerk, call the vote.
Commissioner Unruh.
No.
Commissioner Norton.
No.
Commissioner Howell.
No.
Commissioner Peter John.
Aye.
Chairman Ransah.
Aye.
So that motion fails two to three. Commissioner Howell.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would make a substitute motion that we would not eliminate the breastfeeding peer counselors, but I am in favor of reducing the amount to a different amount, that's And the justification for that number is simply taking the amount of money that's been offered on this grant and subtracting out the amount of money that was left over in the previous year that we did not need, which I think frees up that money for other communities to use on the front end rather than on the back end. So I would rather not, I don't think we need $2,259,000. What we really need is $1,939,000 to run this program in its full extent. So this is not a reduction in services in any way. This provides for all the staff that's currently in place. And, and so that's my motion. If it's clear, it's, again, to accept the grant with the exception of reducing the amount to $1,939,000.
I will second that motion.
Commissioner Norton.
Once we start down the path, are we not supposed to go ahead and go back to the original motion in order and then vote on it? And if we want to start over again, that's the way we do it?
No, we, we've been allowed, we've allowed substitute motions.
Okay.
Yeah. Madam Clerk, call the vote.
Commissioner Unruh.
No.
Commissioner Norton.
No.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Peter John.
Aye.
Chairman Ransah.
Aye.
So that one passes three to two with the reduced amount, but breastfeeding peer counselors are still in. Everyone, and we, okay, we'll have more discussion about the others.
May I ask for one clarification?
Yes.
And maybe I misheard you say earlier that the amount that we didn't use of our previous authorization was over a two-year period of 300 and some thousand.
No, it was 320,000 in both years.
Oh, both, huh.
So a total of 600,000.
Okay. I just wanted to clarify, thank you.
With that, I think we do have need for executive session.
Are you recognizing me, Mr. Chairman?
Yes. Commissioner Peter John.
Okay. Well, Mr. Chairman, I move that the Board of County.
Thank you, Adrian.
Recession into executive session for 30 minutes to consider personal matters of non-elected personnel and that the Board of County Commissioners return to this room from executive session no sooner than 10:30 a.m.
I'll second that motion. Madam Clerk, call the vote.
Commissioner Unruh.
Aye.
Commissioner Norton.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Peter John.
Aye.
Chairman Ransah.
Aye.
We'll now move to executive session.[1459.73] All right, thank you. We're now back from executive session, and no binding action was taken. Madam Clerk, we'll now move to the next item, please.
Item I, consideration of a grant in the amount of four million seven hundred and eighty-one thousand two hundred and sixty-three dollars for Calm Care's participating community mental health center agreement.
Good morning, Commissioners. Marilyn Cook with Calm Care. This item is an agreement with the Kansas Department of Aging and Disability Services, or K-Dads, to provide behavioral health services to individuals who are uninsured or underinsured. Um, the agreement amount is four million seven hundred and eighty-one thousand two hundred and sixty-three dollars, which is the same amount that we received last year. The document, um, is a big agreement, and it contains the scope of the work that is to be provided, as well as several pages of outcomes that we are expected to achieve. Some of those outcomes include things like the percent of consumers with a serious and persistent mental illness who improve their vocational status, um, and who improve their residential status, in other words, living independently as possible, and outcomes related to accessing services and timeliness of service. This year, um, there is also an increased focus on the admission rate to local and state-inpatient psychiatric facilities, um, as well as looking at readmission rates for individuals who have been discharged from those, uh, facilities and then being readmitted within thirty days. Um, there are also a number of outcome measures for children that you can see in there that include things like children who have serious emotional disturbances, who are successfully completing services, um, the expectation that children we are serving are attending school regularly, um, and those being discharged from residential facilities, getting medication needs met in a very timely manner. So, we are recommending that you accept the grant award and authorize the chairman or his designee to sign all the necessary documents.
Commissioners, what's the will of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I move we take the appropriate action, the recommended action.
Second. Commissioner Peter John?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, I noticed that this, that this amount is, uh, slightly smaller than last year, and was interested in any details in terms of, uh, was this just a reduction across the board that the state had in appropriations for all the counties that are receiving these funds from the state?
There was a very small reduction, and, um, but essentially, it's the same funding. What K-Dads did is, a couple of years ago, they developed some regions, and Calm Care is part of Region Two, along with Bu- Butler and Summer Counties. And last year, the activities and the money that went into Region Two, um, were different than this year. This year, for Region Two, they're using the federal block grant money part of this grant. Um, and we cannot use federal block grants for this grant for any substance use, um, or administrative activities. So, there's just a small reduction, um, because of that, but essentially, the rest of it is the same.
Thank you.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, call the vote.
Commissioner Enruh?
Aye.
Commissioner Norton?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Peter John?
Aye.
Chairman Ransah?
Aye. And I keep forgetting to ask for public comment on these law. If you want to talk on any of these, just raise your hand, let us know.
I will, thank you.
Uh, next item, please.
Item J, consideration of a grant in the amount of one hundred and six thousand six hundred and eighty-three dollars from Kansas Department for Aging and Disability Services for Calm Care's PATH homeless program.
Commissioners, this item is renewal of the PATH grant, and PATH is an acronym that stands for Projects of Assistance in Transition from Homelessness. We've been receiving this grant for a little over twenty years. The grant amount is one hundred and six thousand six hundred and eighty-three dollars. Um, the main focus of the grant is for Calm Care staff that are funded by this to engage in various sort of outreach, uh, with individuals who are homeless and who also have a mental illness. Um, so the grant provides funding for two full-time case managers, um, and, uh, point four FTE for, um, an office specialist who helps, uh, the community's continuum of care in terms of homeless services, keep track of the data that is needed. Um, we recommend that you accept the grant and, um, authorize the chairman or his designee to sign all the necessary documents.
Commissioners, what's the will of the board? I'm, I may, go ahead.
Oh, okay. Mr. Chairman, I'm going to make a motion that we, uh, approve this grant and authorize the chairman or his designee to sign any and all necessary documents.
Second. Madam Clerk, call the vote.
Commissioner Enruh?
Aye.
Commissioner Norton?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Peter John?
Aye.
Chairman Ransah?
Aye.
Thank you.
Next item?
Item K, reported the Board of Bids and Contracts regular meeting on October first, two thousand fifteen.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. Joe Thomas, Procuring Director. The meeting of the Board of Bids and Contracts of October first results in one item for your consideration, and this item is the bridge improvements for Project B four-eighty for Public Works. The recommendation is to reject both submitted bids and, uh, rebid sometime in the future. I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have, and, uh, recommend approval of this item.
Thank you, Joe. Is anyone from the public like to speak on this item? Seeing none. Commissioner Peter John?
I'm ready to make a motion that we approve the recommendations of the Boards of Bids and Contracts.
A second. Madam Clerk, call the vote.
Commissioner Enruh?
Aye.
Commissioner Norton?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Peter John?
Aye.
Chairman Ransah?
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Next item, please.
Consent Agenda.
Ron Holt, Acting County Manager, uh, you have the Consent Agenda items L through P. Recommend approval. First, I'll ask if there's anyone from the public who'd like to speak on this item? Seeing none. Commissioner Peter John?
I'm going to make a motion that we approve, uh, the Consent Agenda, but I do have some comments on Item M, and I'd like to get on the record, uh, at an appropriate time, Mr. Chairman.
I second that.
Very good. I, I have comments on the same item as well. Commissioner Peter John?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, on Item M, I, one of the items on there was to, uh, defer a road project on West one hundred and eighty-third Street and, uh, had number of citizens had concerns about, uh, the trees on it, and I think the road's in pretty good shape, and, uh, appreciate everybody who's been involved in terms of working, trying to come up with a mutually satisfactory arrangement, uh, concerning that stretch of road, and, uh, and most of the rest of this is an item that, uh, I'm glad to see locked in and, and put in place, and, uh, I think we'll have a good county road system in place, uh, with the improvements that are outlined next year, uh, that are contained in Item M. Ron, did you have something?
Mr. Chairman, just a correction. I said Consent Agenda was items L through P, and they are actually, actually items L through V.
V. All right, thank you. Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to bring a little bit of visibility to one of the items on Item M. That is the bridge redecking of, uh, MacArthur Street Bridge over the Big Arc Kansas River, and the importance of any, I think, bridge that goes over the river is extremely important. Uh, to get around that bridge would be extremely painful for people who are used to traveling over that bridge, and it also provides, um, access for some of the workers that, uh, work at the Spirit, uh, Spirit Aerosystems Company. So I think this is just a really important part of this, um, Consent Agenda, um, and I want to just bring some visibility, visibility to it. It's a fairly expensive, uh, part of this, um, item, so it's a million dollars for construction, and by doing this, we're going to potentially save many millions of dollars by being a little bit proactive. The, the deck on this bridge is in, is in poor repair, but the substructure's in good shape, and by doing this now, we potentially will save a, a total bridge replacement. And so we're just being, uh, careful and proactive and, and taking care of our stuff when we, when it's the most appropriate time. Um, and this is exactly the right time to do this, and so I'm glad to see this on this list, and I'm very glad to support it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
And along that same, I have a few questions or comments. First of all, uh, for our Public Works Director, on that particular bridge, it's going to cost us a million to redo this. How much would it cost to replace it? I'm sorry, did you?
David Spears, Director of Public Works, anywhere, we don't have plans, of course, but we are bridging and estimating anywhere from four to six million dollars.
Four to six million. So this bridge has a high efficiency rating, uh, but it's-
Over ninety.
It's over ninety, but it still has problems that, that need to be addressed so that we don't incur future expenses.
Correct. We could, if we can save the deck, the rest of the bridge is in great shape, so that's, that's the goal. And it, uh, main, uh, bridge there with, uh, for folks that go to Spirit.
Okay. Well, in general, I want to address these, these, uh, projects here, certainly be supportive of them, um, and kind of clarify some things about our budget, because we had a lot of discussion about our budget, and, uh, a lot of it was about roads and bridges and things, and there was a lot of things said out there, some withdrew, a lot of it factually incorrect. Uh, one of the things that was said was that we should just adopt the budget that was provided by our previous manager, because it was balanced and it was just great. Uh, but unfortunately, that, if we had adopted that budget, none of these projects were be, would be happening, because they weren't included. Um, in fact, the manager, despite the, uh, direction from the commission, took these out, didn't fund them with cash, didn't fund them with bonds at all. His budget was incomplete. Uh, he tried to make the argument to me that because of this bridge has a high efficiency rating of over ninety that we shouldn't be spending money on, but he, in fact, didn't understand the situation. So fortunately, this commission had the foresight and, and will to, to find out the facts, put these projects back in and find, and fund them so that we could, uh, move forward on these infrastructure projects, um, because, you know, reducing our investment in our infrastructure only, only gets us, you know, in a hole. We're, we're going to be addressing this comp plan here in a few weeks, and it's talking about how much we're behind on investment in road and bridges and a lot of things. So, by accepting the ori- the original draft proposal by a previous manager, we would have only made things worse, and of course, these are some of the details that often don't get out in the public and don't know what the discussions are going on behind the scenes. But just to reiterate, if it wouldn't have been for the foresight of this commission, these projects would not be happening at all if we had taken the recommendation of some. So, uh, I'm happy to support this, and I think these are good, good things to do, are for the community and appropriate, and, um, I'm very happy that we're doing them. Uh, I think we do have a motion and a second, do we not?
No second.
Oh, we don't?
No.
Well, I'll second. Madam Clerk, call the vote.
Commissioner Enruh?
Aye.
Commissioner Norton?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Peter John?
Aye.
Chairman Ransah?
Aye. And, next we have legislative issues, but we don't have anything.
No, sir.
Now we do have the other portion of our meeting. Commissioners, do you have anything for other? Commissioner Peter John?
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm going to mention, uh, an event that, uh, took place last Sunday. Uh, uh, it was, uh, the memorial for the fallen firefighters here in Kansas, and they memorialized a hundred and fourteen firefighters, three of whom were from the Sedgwick County Fire District, uh, in a ceremony that was held Sunday afternoon. And, uh, I would have mentioned it last week, but didn't find out about this event until, actually, last Friday afternoon. So, wasn't in a position to, uh, publicly announce it a week ago, but, uh, was able to attend it, and, uh, I think it's an important event in the community to recognize these folks, uh, because the fire department, um, serves a very important function all across the state, and whether it's a volunteer department, we've got a number in the county, or department, professional department like Sedgwick County Fire District Number One. Uh, all the folks who are active out there, working to try and keep their community safe, deserve recognition. Folks are at risk, and we've had a, unfortunately, a hundred and fourteen who've lost their lives, uh, trying to keep their communities safe, and, uh, it was a very poignant and excellent event, uh, Sunday afternoon, and wanted to at least get it on the record, even if it is a bit belated. Also wanted, Mr. Chairman, to point out that October seventh is a very important day in American history, and it's important on a number of specific dates. Um, one of the first steps for the United States to become a country occurred in seventeen sixty-five, when the Standback Congress met in New York City to discuss problems the colonials had with, uh, the mother country at that time. And interestingly enough, on this date, October seventh, twelve years later, the Americans won a huge victory. It led the defeat of the British and the surrender of General Burgoyne at the Battle of Saratoga and, and also in New York. And, uh, and three years later, on this date, uh, the battle that turned the tide in the South in seventeen eighty, the Battles of Kings Mountain occurred, and, uh, uh, and so from an American Revolutionary War point of view, October seventh is noteworthy on three separate years and, and those dates. Also be remiss if I didn't point out that, uh, on this date in two thousand and one, some of us here would remember this, the United States troops la- launched Operation Enduring Freedom to try and destroy, uh, the Al Qaeda terrorist operation in Afghanistan and, uh, the Taliban government that was protecting it. So, Mr. Chairman, I wanted to point that out about October seventh being an important day in American history, and thank you.
Thank you. Uh, I've got a few things. First of all, the weekend before last, we haven't had a meeting since then, but the weekend before last, we did participate with the City Council in the Chili Cook-Off on that Saturday, and that was a good event. I appreciate, uh, Commiss- or, uh, Councilman Frey for organizing that and helping put it all together, and I think we all had a good time, uh, uh, doing that. Also, I want to say thanks to Public Works. I know, uh, they've been doing some of these cold mixed replacement roads this year, and recently, they finished Forty-Fifth Street between, uh, Ridge Road and Hoover in my district, and I know I had lots of comments about that last year, and so this is a very timely, uh, road project to be done, and I'm appreciative of, of, of the work that you're doing in that area.
Hopefully, thirty-seventh will be done at the end of this week.
And that's a partnership between the City, County, and the City of Mays, uh, to get that done, and, and, uh, that, that's another good, good deal going on over there. So, thank you on that. And then, uh, I haven't get, I haven't done this in a while, so for my, uh, progressive friends, uh, they may not like this update, but I'm going to give an update of the goings-on in the world with respect to Sustainable Development and Agenda Twenty-One. Now, I like to do this every now and then to let the folks out there know what's going on. If you don't know what I'm talking about, then I would encourage you to Google Sustainable Development Agenda Twenty-One when we're done here. Uh, some of my progressive friends, particularly at the Eagle, uh, want you to think that nothing's going on, you don't have anything to worry about, so you can do your own research and figure out if something's going on. But, uh, I do have this news report. Uh, there was a meeting, uh, September twenty-fifth at the UN in New York City, um, and, uh, they want to set up a progressive agenda for the next fifteen years known as the UN Sustainable Development Goals, and that consists of seventeen overarching goals and a hundred and sixty-nine subordinate targets. Um, now, interestingly enough, a couple of international, international science councils evaluated these and offered some suggestions to approve them, because they said, in many ways, uh, the program is in many ways uncoordinated, unmeasurable, and unrealistically ambitious. However, all of those suggestions were rejected because they just didn't want to mess up, they want to get it done. And so, uh, UN Secretary General Ban Ki-moon says that this will be a defining moment in human history, and it's their transformative vision for a better world. So, and then after that, two days later, President Barack Obama pledged U.S. support for the effort and whatever it takes. So, there's, there's people out there to tell you to don't worry about sustainable development, nothing's going on, the UN, ah, don't worry, but Barack Obama says, "We're going to do it, baby, no matter what it takes." So you can decide for yourself if it matters to you or not. We, of course, have organizations here, uh, that push these efforts, and it's being supported at the federal level. It's even being supported at the state level for a variety of reasons. So I want to put that out there for those of you who do know what this is, because from time to time, I know you like to hear updates and know what's going on, and understand that things that happen outside of a community do affect us, and we need to know what's going on. So, I appreciate the time to speak to that. Does anyone else have anything for other? Seeing none. We've already had our executive session, and we do not have a fire agenda today, correct, Mr. Manager?
Correct.
Is there anything else to come before the commission?
No, sir.
Seeing none, we are adjourned.